Jake Pearson, old Commissioner, young Commissioner, Pete Haristou, new Commissioner Aaron Hildreth, and myself Ned Hacker. I'm the Vice Chair. And our staff, we've got Chad Wilkinson, we've got, what's your name? Zach Smallwood, David Rogers, another Rogers, and Ruth?
Ruwa.
Ruwa. All right. Looks like we have kind of short agenda tonight. Want to welcome the, our new two Commissioners. We've got one Commissioner that is, excuses evening, Peter Klingon. And I think that's it. Some meeting guidelines. If you have an audio device, I'd ask you to turn it off. If you probably won't have an issue with having a lot of commotion in our attendees tonight, so we won't go through that. And go through some rules if you're watching on streaming video. If you want to make a comment, streaming video, well, first, the streaming video you can see at www.murraycitylive.com or at www.facebook.com/murraycityutah. You can submit a comment by email at PC@murray.utah.gov. We would like to limit comments to three minutes. And written comments will be right into the record if we have any of those. And if you include your name and contact information for the record, that would be greatly appreciated. Other support material, if you're not here in the room, can be found at www.murray.utah.gov/779/Agendas-Attachment. So with all of that, we'll go through our business items. First business item, we're going to elect new Chairman and Vice Chairman for our 2025 Business Year. So any discussion by the Commissioners other than discussion, I'd take any nominations for Chairman for the Murray City Planning Commission for 2025.
So on your screen, or on the screen over there, I guess, I put up the recommended nominations. It will require a second, and then we'll do it.
Voice.
We'll do it.
Okay.
This one?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we'll pass around the mic this evening. So just to reiterate for the people that are watching at home, the procedure is that a Planning Commissioner will recommend or nominate somebody to the Chair, and I've put up the, on the screen for that nomination, so.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we nominate Michael Richards to be the Planning Commission Chair for the year 2025.
All right, you have a motion. Is there a second?
I will second.
All right, Zach, will you take the, we'll call. Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Hildreth?
Yes.
Commissioner Haristo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Just for the record, all Commissioners present voted in favor. And just for the record, I want to say that.
And just for the record, I want to say that Michael isn't here tonight.
Chair, I'd like to nominate Pete Haristo to be the Planning Commission Vice President for the year 2025.
I second that. Okay, great. So I will, Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hildreth?
Yes.
Commissioner Haristo?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Okay. For the record, all voting members voted in the affirmative. All right, excellent.
All right, thank you. That's great. So we have new Chairman and Vice Chairman for 2025. They'll do a great job. Third item on our agenda, conflict of interest. Does anyone have conflict of interest with agenda items that we're going to review tonight?
No.
Thank you. I do not either. And fourth agenda item, approval of findings of facts and conclusions. We have one, the Utah Woolen Mills Site Plan Review. Has everybody been able to look at that?
Do we need a few minutes?
We'll get there.
Sound good.
Anybody look at the Woolenville, Utah Woolen Mills' Approval of Finding of Facts and Conclusions?
Yes.
Okay, do you have to make a motion?
Chair, I'll make a motion. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the finding of facts for the Utah Woolen Mills Site Plan Review.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the approval of the minutes from December 5th, item number two that I skipped over. So all Commissioners had opportunity to look at those.
Yes.
Any corrections?
No.
I'll accept the motion.
Okay, I'll try it. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve, correct? Approve the minutes from December 5th, 2024.
Are they wrong on that agenda? It should be the 19th.
Oh, okay. I'll try it again.
They're all.
I think the actual minutes say 19.
Okay. It is the 19. I'm sorry.
But on the agenda, that's good. Let's try again. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from December 19th, 2024.
I'll second. All right, any other discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, aye. Minutes approved. So our first real agenda item is the item number five, Levi's Lot Subdivision Amendment amended. And is the applicant here tonight? Okay, they're here. I'll have you come up to the microphone after we have our staff review by Ruth.
Thank you, Commissioners. So this is a subdivision amendment for the Levi's Lot subdivision located at 50 and 58 East, 6100 South, and 59 East and 6150 South. So here is the site of the three properties affected by the subdivision amendment near State Street, and each property is about a quarter of an acre in size. And here's the zoning of the properties. They are zoned R18, and their neighbors are zoned CD for commercial development. And here is the current plat. There is currently a fence on Lot 2 that slightly encroaches into the properties to the north and to the west. And here is the amended plat. And here are the changes to the plat that will align the fence with the property line. So 17 notices for this proposed subdivision amendment was, were mailed, and staff hasn't received any comments. And so based on analysis of the application, materials submitted, and the site visits and survey of the surrounding area, staff concludes the following, that the subdivision of land is allowed by Utah State Code, and with conditions, this proposed subdivision amendment will meet the requirements therein, and the proposed subdivision amendment will continue to comply with all the applicable regulations in the R18 zone, and the proposed subdivision amendment complies with the regulations of Title 16. And so with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the proposed subdivision amendment for Levi's Lot subdivision, amending Lot 2 at these addresses, subject to the following three conditions. And happy to take any questions.
No questions, all right. Will applicant come up here to this only microphone that works? And you give your name and address, so we can have that for the.
Anna Bochboot. Sorry. In my address?
Yes.
Okay. 59 East, 6150 South, Murray, Utah.
And have you had an opportunity to look at these different conditions? And are you able to meet those conditions?
Correct, yes, I am.
All right. And do you have anything to add to the staff report?
We do not. Nothing. Nothing.
Does any, are any Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. All right, I'll open the meeting for public comment. We didn't get any initial comments before the agenda was set out, so Zach could ask you, do we get any new ones? Okay. Should we give 30 seconds for anybody to call in? All right, pretty straightforward. I will close the public comment period and ask Commissioners if you have any other discussion or entertain a motion.
So Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the proposed subdivision amendment for Levi's Lot subdivision, amending Lot 2 for the property addressed 59 East, 6150 South, and the properties addressed 50 and 58 East, 6100 South, subject to the conditions prescribed in the presentation.
I'll second. Right, there's motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? And Zach could ask for a vote.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hildreth?
Yes.
Commissioner Haristo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
And Chair Hacker?
Yes.
Awesome. Everybody that voted was in the affirmative. All right, well, thank you, and good luck with your project going forward.
Sorry.
And our last agenda item is discussion of and presentation by Voda and Form-Based Code. So have at it. You have to use the microphone. And I guess I had to apologize for anybody listening to our meeting tonight. We're having some issues with the Murray City Hall Chamber electronics, so we're making do with what we have. Thank you.
Technology.
Thank you, Chair Hacker. Yeah, so we are coming before you tonight with our consultant, Mark, with Voda Landscape and Planning, to go over work that's been done on the Murray City Center Form-Based Code. For those of you that are new, we have been working on this since about, what, July? Maybe even earlier. It's been a whirlwind getting this put together really quickly, as I promised the Council I would. And so, yeah, I will turn the time over to Mark to provide some updates on it. So there you go. Could I add something to this before you start, Mark?
Absolutely.
So in our pre-meeting, we had a couple of questions by the Commissioners about what Form-Based Code really is, what it does for the community, what it does for business owners, and I know you're going to go over that, but I think we had a couple of questions and had some discussion that seemed to really clarify what Form-Based Code is and how it, I would say, how it improves the development in specific areas around cities.
Sure. Yeah, that's great.
Thank you for that. I will go over some of the, kind of answering your question, what is Form-Based Code intended to do? I've got some things we can look through. I've got a full draft of the code that we can refer to specific parts if you have specific questions. We've got a prototype document we can look at as well, but hopefully can get through all of your questions, especially for new Commissioners that might need to understand some of the basics, the Form-Based Code. So as Zach mentioned, we've been working, my team's been working with Steering Committee for several months now to develop a draft Form-Based Code for the city center area. At its core, Form-Based Code is just a different way to regulate land development. So everyone's familiar with zoning. It's all very focused on use. Form-Based Code takes that and puts use in the backseat, and the form of the development is really driving the, driving the development. So use is still a consideration, it's just not the main driver of the development. The goal of a Form-Based Code is to develop a community in a way that supports reusability of development. We're all familiar with development proposals that come in, and it's a Costco, and if that Costco were to ever move, there is a very short list of people who could use that building. If you look at the historic buildings along State Street, those buildings have been reused and reused and reused and reused. And so a Form-Based Code is really looking at what are timeless patterns of development? How do we write that into our code so that regardless of whether it's 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 50 years from now, the development that we're doing this year is something that will survive? The form of that development is very much focused on building heights, setbacks, where is that building located on the site? These are not architectural guidelines, so we're not saying that everything has to look a particular architectural style. It's really looking at the things that are difficult to change. So where a building is located, that's difficult to change. The paint color of a building, the brick type on the facade, those are things that are pretty easy to change. So the Form-Based Code focuses on, okay, the things that are going to be here for decades and decades, we need to make sure we get that right. The other parts are considered here, but they're less central to that process. If you have questions as we go along, by all means, let's talk through those questions. A Form-Based Code is, again, this is a code change, so these are incremental changes. A lot of times when a community sees renderings of places changing, they think that there's some master developer with tons of money and the power to come in and change everything drastically overnight. That is not at all what a Form-Based Code does. This is saying, current businesses, they can stay doing exactly what they're doing for as long as they would like. If there's an empty parcel or a property owner that does want to redevelop, what is the code going to require them to do? So this isn't a master plan, this is really just saying, let's change our code so that it lines up with our community goals for the city center area. Form-Based Code allows for a wide variety of uses. So we'll talk about this, but the use is a consideration, but it's far more flexible. So as far as the question of what does this do for existing property owners, existing business owners, it gives them a lot of flexibility to let the market determine what are the things that if a development comes in would be viable as far as the economics go. No one in this room can decide what market economics are or what's viable. If we have a property owner that this year's one project may be viable if they develop in 10 years, the use isn't determined in so much rigidity that it's not flexible to market conditions. So that really gives property owners a lot of options as far as development goes. What the Form-Based Code does is it gives, you know, here are some prescriptive things as far as the form, but lots of flexibility with use. Again, focus on building location on the property, focus on the building form, and brings main entrances to face the street, we'll talk about that. More options of use for property owners who want to develop when they want to develop. So again, any business that's currently in the city center area can stay as long as they would like. It's really only triggered when major change is proposed. Questions so far? So far, so good. Okay. The Form-Based Code is only applied to the city center area. When a Form-Based Code is developed, it's very context sensitive, so you don't pick up a Form-Based Code from another city and say, oh, that'll work here, let's do that. Really, you tailor it very specifically to a physical location. These parameters, or this boundary was determined with the help of the Steering Committee. It's really almost the entire MCCD zone. Basically, this would replace that MCCD zone in the city's code. There are a couple areas outside that it sounds like you were talking about that would be left, left out of the Form-Based Code. A lot of the MCCD area is already technically a mixed-use zone, so this isn't a wild deviation from what is, you know, what someone could do today. It just gives it a lot more detail as far as how those requirements might play out in the future. This area, this boundary, we've gone back and forth on some specific parcels, but again, it's kind of guided by that MCCD zone. The areas, kind of the change in color are what we call a Form District, which we'll talk about in a bit. None of the single-family neighborhoods or anything that is outside of that MCCD zone will be changed by this code. So if you have constituents or neighbors asking, this is really just about the city center area. So big question, why is a city using a Form-Based Code? A Form-Based Code is intended to be, provide a city with more consistent predictable development patterns. And that predictability goes both ways, that a developer, a private property owner, has more understanding of what's expected, city staff, Planning Commission, City Council, there's more predictability with a Form-Based Code than with, you know, here's, you know, here's the city's current zoning, and, you know, let's go through 30,000 words and understand what the city is asking us to do. A lot of cities in Utah currently use Form-Based Code. This is used nationwide, it's used in a lot of cities across the country. Solak City was the first in 2006, so going on 20 years. A lot of cities surrounding Murray are currently using Form-Based Code. We've worked on a few of these. Midvale City, your neighbor to the southwest, we helped them adopt a Form-Based Code in 2019 for their historic city center area. I took these photos a few months ago of the development that they're getting along their historic Main Street. One of the main concerns around Midvale's historic Main Street was they have historic buildings, how do we make sure that our new development fits in, the context is respected, but also the development is going to help activate historic Main Street that had seen better days? So these are just some example images of how Form-Based Code and the type of development that is being built, you know, today, is regulated. Some of the things that Form-Based Code focuses on is transparency at the ground level, materiality and articulation of facades. This image in the bottom right corner, we'll talk a little bit about BTZ pedestrian space. It's really build-to-zone, it's saying, okay, let's bring the building up to the street, let's make sure that this, that the structure of the building is going to activate and support walkability and interest at that ground level. So just an example of other cities that have been using Form-Based Code. Midvale's been happy with the development that they've been getting and feel like it's been, I guess Zach can tell us if that's the case, they've been happy with the types of development and the form that is helping to bring some activity and some investment to a Main Street that hadn't seen investment in decades, we'll see. So just an example, a close-by example. As I mentioned, the code gives property owners greater flexibility by permitting more diverse uses, so it's not sitting down and saying, okay, this has to be housing or it has to be commercial. It's really saying, here is a range of choices that you could make with your, with your development. You can choose what you feel like is, you know, you're most interested in or you feel like is the most viable for you. Another thing that it does is it provides direction as development concentrates in the city center area. There are certain parts of your city that are certainly densifying, and so looking at the city center, how do we make sure that that development is activating the city center and accomplishing the things that your existing planning documents define for the city center? If there's any place in your city that development should be happening, it should be right here in your city center where you've got lots of space, you've got lots of redevelopable land, your proximity to jobs and transportation infrastructure, the track system, the front-runner system, these are all things that really would help a city center to really develop in a way that would create a really vibrant part of the city. As far as process goes, this chart on the left, if you have the document, this happens in the Administration chapter, where what we're trying to do is really define, here is the chart of what that process would look like for a property owner. They would have a pre-application meeting with city staff, which, who would help them kind of understand, here's what that submittal is going to look like, a formal project application submittal, planning staff review and comments. And then from here, what you would have is basically two potential paths. If you have projects that are under certain thresholds, those could be improved administratively by planning staff. These are smaller-scale projects, things that meet every, you know, every regulation in the code, really rewarding those who are saying, okay, we're going to, we're going to do all of these things. If they have certain exceptions, or they're asking for, we'll call it, conditions on their variance to the code, those would go through a process where they'd be reviewed by an architectural review committee, this body, the Planning Commission, to determine if it's acceptable, the variance of, from the code that they're, that they're asking for. So the process, again, is meant to be pretty straightforward and pretty simple to understand. This in the corner that you can see in the document, there's a worksheet, and the worksheet really goes step by step and says, okay, here's the requirement, how does your development meet that requirement? And it makes it very easy to kind of track, okay, they've met almost all of these, here are three that they're not quite meeting, what do we do to get them there? Mill Creek City's been using a Form-Based Code for a few years now for their city center, their town center area, and they said that this worksheet is really the key to success, that it really solidifies the process and that there's no guesswork on either side, that staff know exactly what questions to ask you as Commissioners if they show up and say, we're meeting everything but these two, let's talk about it. It really makes it a lot clearer as far as process, as far as process goes, so.
We couldn't get this right, Zach.
I don't think it was in the draft.
And I'll show you, I've got it in here, I'll show you, and you can, you can review, review that. But that worksheet, I think, is a really important part to.
We got the worksheet, I don't think we got the explanation of the worksheet.
Oh, yeah, no, this document, you, yeah, but I'll send it to Zach, and he can share, he can share this with you. One of the things that we've got, and we can, we can refer to it as we go, we've developed a prototype for the Form-Based Code. And the prototype is really meant to show in a graphic way, here's how these particular parameters play out in the Form-Based Code. Again, when you have land use code that is just 30,000 words that, you know, an attorney needs to interpret for you, the intent of the Form-Based Code is to say, okay, here's exactly what we're talking about, and here's the number, here's the range that you need to, that you need to hit. So in that, in that prototype, all of these parameters are spelled out in a way that if Zach or his staff are sitting here with a property owner, they can point to it and say, here's what we're, here's what we're talking about, this is the piece that, you know, we need to clarify, or just to help, help those property owners understand. If they have an architectural team in the room, architectural teams are very familiar with Form-Based Codes and how to, how to interpret all these things, but the graphic nature of the prototype makes it very helpful. So if Zach comes in here and they do a staff report and they say, here's the thing that they're not meeting, and here's their case for why they're not meeting it, it just helps with understanding that, what the question is. A lot of the, again, the focus of the Form-Based Code, building height, setback, building articulation, primary entrance location, those are things that are. those are things that a form-based code really focuses on. A lot of the other things are more secondary or tertiary in, in the code. The form districts are really the closest parallel you have to a zone. And so if a property owner comes in, the first question you're gonna ask is, which form district are we talking about? The form districts have a variation in building heights allowed, setbacks. All of those things are really driven by which form district. So you'll see here, the properties along State Street would have a different requirement than properties around City Hall here, down closer to the tracks and front-runner stations. So again, it's really context sensitive to say, here's a building height that would be appropriate in this part of the city center, wouldn't necessarily be appropriate in, you know, all areas of the city center. Here's a, as part of this process, we, we put together a graphic that just showed massings to say, here's the maximum heights for all of these parts of the city center area. You'll see the tallest allowed would be closer to the tracks and front-runner area. Those along State Street would really be driven by existing height variations along State Street. Those a little bit further off of State Street might allow a little bit more, more height. And those that are fronting on the neighborhood to the east would have a lower height, something that would be more context appropriate. Currently, the MCCD zone just has one height for the whole thing, more or less. And so this really gets into a little bit more nitty-gritty to say, okay, what are the things that would be the most appropriate height-wise? And again, these are maximums. Not every person that walks in the room is gonna say, I'm gonna go all the way to the maximum. There are certain economics in play here. And so that's just saying, okay, in theory, the taller buildings are allowed closer to the tracks and front-runner station, closer to Inner Mountain, where we already have some significant height. The, the buildings along State, again, driven by historical, kind of historical range of buildings along, along State Street. Great. So that is, that's the end of that presentation. Any questions on, on that before we get into the code itself?
I have a question.
Sure.
The, the document, this working draft we were provided, is that going to actually be the code? So this document will be the code? Essentially, once it's finalized? Okay, thank you.
If you choose to adopt it.
And the code is quite long, but any particular property owner that comes in, they're really only going to be looking at the parts that adhere to their specific form district. And so what, what may, may help, let's go to the code itself. So here, the draft of the code, you'll see we've got certain, certain requirements in here. Form district, we've mentioned use, there are some use tables, street types, building types, open space, landscaping, parking, signage. So these are all things that are commonly regulated by land use code. This really spells out each one of those. And again, it's not that someone has to know all 100 pages here. It's really saying, here's the section, here's the table that you need to, that you need to adhere to. So the worksheet at the end of the document, here's a, here's a draft of the worksheet where someone would fill in, here's, you know, here's, here's my project, here's the address. Each of these parameters, there's a hyperlink where they could say, okay, well, I don't, I don't know which building type, they're gonna click on that and it's gonna take them to the table. So then they would say, okay, I'm in the CC form district. Here's the, here's the column that I need to, that I need to understand. So the intent of that worksheet is to make it so, okay, as I'm going through each one of these steps, I know exactly which table I'm looking at and how to, you know, how to, how to interpret that. So they have an opportunity to kind of pitch their project, how it, you know, supports the, the, the city's vision is spelled out in the general plan. Each of those characteristics, they can go through kind of piece by piece and, and say, okay, here's what we're, here's what we're proposing, here's what we're doing. And then the staff can make comments over here on the side. So again, it's not, it's not meant to say, you know, we're, we're not tossing 100 pages at some poor developer and saying, understand this. It's really giving them a tool to say, okay, here is how to use this. Here's what we're going to be looking for, but that predictability is there. We're not gonna turn around after two or three reviews and say, oh, by the way, here's another thing we didn't think about and we want you to do X, Y, Z. Developers hate that, planners hate that. And so it's really just saying, okay, as long as we go through each one of these parameters, let's talk about that requirement and, you know, understand it well. And then that submittal is hopefully, again, more predictable for everyone involved. Questions on, on any of that?
Yeah.
I, I have lots of questions, so I just want, I, I don't wanna just jump in. I want you to do whatever you need to do. I noticed when I was going through here that a lot of hyperlinks don't work. So, I mean, I don't know if you want me to tell you all those or, yeah.
That, we're super aware of. That draft that we sent, whenever we move pages around the hyperlinks, we have to re-link them. So this document that I've got has the hyperlinks all.
Okay, some work, some didn't, so, yeah, okay.
And that's just the nature of the program that we use.
And then are you just planning on going through it? So should we ask questions as we go? Is that how the?
You know, we can go to any part you wanna talk about. I wasn't planning to go through the whole, the whole code, so if you wanna talk about.
Well, I don't wanna take over the meeting, so. Okay, I got, I have just questions, so maybe I'll just go through my list. It was very confusing for me. Like in the beginning, it goes through the different districts. After that, I never knew what district I was looking at. Like usually when I'm reading through even like complicated code, I can kind of tell what district. But if I just start flipping through this, I like general street layout requirements. What, what district is this for? I have no idea. So I think it would be beneficial to maybe put a footer or something or color code. I don't know. Just, just so, 'cause you'll be reading this, 'cause I did it multiple times. And all of a sudden, I'm in a different district and I didn't even realize it until I halfway through the page and I go, oh, wait a second, why that city neighborhood? Because I all of a sudden flipped to a different district. So that was, that was one of the things I noticed. Bulb out intersections. Are those even feasible? I don't think those are feasible on State Street. And we're putting it in here saying we should, we're gonna do it.
Well, so.
State Street in particular, we've talked about with the, the steering committee. Anything that we put in here on State Street, we'll say is wishful thinking to get, get it out of UDOT. We looked, or we talked about a section of State Street in downtown Salt Lake that did something pretty similar, where they brought in the curb a little bit. They did bulb outs, they, they shortened the pedestrian crossing, they put in some medians. They did it as kind of a test scenario downtown to see what it, what at work. I think the intent of putting it in here is saying, okay, someday, UDOT is gonna come through and say, we're rebuilding State Street through the city center. And I think they're not gonna do that the entire length of the city. But I think if we have a goal to make it more walkable, make the traffic a little more pedestrian-friendly, those types of things like bulb outs and improve medians and things like that, we wanted to have it in, in here. UDOT is never easy to deal with, but I think if we do want to have that improvement of slowing the traffic down through the city center, having some of those improvements, we wanted to make sure that it was, it was in here.
Can I plug in for just a second?
Sure.
Yeah. Do you wanna ask a question or? Okay, yeah, let me just plug in real quick. I'll, I'll kind of show you what we were talking about. So my intention, UDOT has become a little bit more open to discussions on things, especially when we know development's gonna come. And of course, this doesn't do what? Hey, hey there. Yeah.
So.
Here, I'll add to that. They're open to discussion. A lot of openness to discussion.
Yes, yes.
There's a lot of difference between discuss and put concrete down.
Sure.
Move concrete.
Sure. So this is an example of, of exactly what they've done. It, it was under construction. I, I went and walked it just recently. It was in the new year, sometime in January.
This is, this is all finished now.
It is. Sixth and Seventh South.
Sixth and Seventh South.
Yep. So if you know where the bayou is, the bayou is right here. Yep, state room's on the other side. They've, they've pulled out these, these, these curbs. They do have a little bit of on-street parking. They've put in planted medians here with trees and, and actually have what's called a hawk signal. So that's where the light actually changes to red to allow a pedestrian to cross. There's a little light there that is mid-block in between Sixth and Seventh South that allows people. I believe it's right out front of the state room, which is, this is really hard to do. One holding, hold on one sec. So, yeah, there we go. So, yeah, right, right here in front of, you can see where the pole actually is right here. So UDOT has been willing to do it. We've, we've built quite a good relationship with UDOT over the past, past year. We've been communicating with them a lot, explained what we'd like to do, at least in this area. And, and so, yeah, I, I think bulb outs could happen and that's what we're hoping for.
Can I say something, Mark?
Yeah. So, so I would say regarding the cities and UDOT and State Street, what I see on State Street is the only city that has their city center on State Street is Murray. And some of these things like the bulb outs and, and the, the planters in the middle of the street in Murray, I think is key to Murray. And I've worked with UDOT a long time and they're not easy to work with. But I think those are the things that the city needs to really focus on. And, okay, so the, the speed limit on State Street, it's the same from Capitol Hill down to Draper. However, in some places, you can't go the whole speed limit just because it's, it narrows a little bit, even though Murray doesn't narrow, it's still three lanes. But with, like the medians, they tend to, to help slow down the traffic. And I think that's crucial to Murray, to, to see the traffic. Okay, it bottles up for a second and then whatever direction you're going, it, it picks up again. So, but while you're in the, in the, this section that we're talking about for, for the traffic to, to slow down, I think is really good.
Good. Yeah, so I think the, in the kind of street discussion, I think you, you know, really your street grid is pretty built out in the city center. A lot of what is in here now is really saying, what is the pedestrian zone? What is going on from the back of the curb? I think as far as transformation for the city center, I think nothing tells a motorist, slow down better than something like that that says, oh, I'm driving through a city center. I may not be able to keep going 50 miles an hour, I need to slow down a bit. So, so to just answer your question, that was kind of a long discussion that we've had about, okay, what do we put in here so that when the day comes, the city's prepared with? Some, some vision of what, what could happen?
I think the concern, so, so everybody knows, if they wanna go look, 600 North, 800 West has bulb outs. They, I mean, it's only two lanes. And I, I think my concern is, does a bulb out destroy the bike lane? Does it reduce the traffic to two lanes? And if it does, do we just get backup? I understand, I understand the need for slowing down traffic, you know, through a city center. But if what we're doing in Murray is bottlenecking State Street and we just have backed up traffic all down Murray, I'm not sure that's beneficial. So that's, yeah.
So oddly enough, our, our current right-of-way for State Street is about the same width as that, that width on, between Sixth and Seventh. So you can't see it, I apologize. But it wouldn't require a reduction in a lane. We, we already have on-street parking on both sides of State Street that could facilitate that, that bulb out. Regarding bike lanes, that's, that's a conversation we need to have. There are opportunities and ways that you can actually bring the bike lane up into the bulb out and then it, it crosses there and then goes back.
I don't think there are any bike lanes on State Street.
State Street, no.
Draper to downtown.
Correct. Yeah, there are no bike lanes on State Street. But on like 48th, for example, in Vine Street, we could, we could bring that up to cross State and then kind of go back into it.
Is that what you're talking about?
Jake, were you talking about State Street specifically or just bulb outs and, and about how bulb outs impact bike lanes?
I'm mostly concerned about State Street.
Okay. So if we already have parking on the side, does the bulb out actually slow down traffic more if we already have narrowed the, the traffic with parking?
So the bulb out isn't necessarily for the traffic, it's for the pedestrian. So what you'll see is that, and I encourage this, and, and maybe even sometime soon, we can go on a little field trip, 'cause it was pretty fascinating to actually feel the difference. If you go out to this corner right here on, on 48th and, and State Street, like you're gonna cross, I do that almost every day lately. It, it feels very hostile and, and the, and the turn radius is very, the car is probably, people freak out when they're with me because I stand right on the corner and they're probably within probably a foot of, of me when they're turning. But when I went down to the. Yeah, I know, right? And, and so, but when you go to that bulb out on Sixth and Seventh, I was right there out on the curb. I went with Phil and, and he noticed a, a very big difference because it widens that turn radius where you actually have to make a wider turn. And your, your, the driver is actually seeing the pedestrian a little bit more because they're pushed out into the road, but in a safer environment. So I don't think it'll slow traffic down, especially along State Street necessarily. It's gonna provide more of protection for, for that pedestrian.
Could you talk about the parking requirements? I don't need to go into the detail, but I, I looked through the numbers and, I mean, they look pretty good. But how are they compared to the new parking requirements that we have in place right now compared to what we're changing the form-based code? Do you know that off the top of your head?
These parking requirements are pretty close to your current parking requirements. We're not proposing massive changes to those. The, a lot of cities, they'll do a minimum and a maximum in a form-based code. Some cities do a maximum only. These are pretty close to what you're already allowing in the MCCD.
You referenced a maximum, but there is, is there, there's no maximum.
We, we don't have any maximums in here.
We have it in the code if there is a maximum. It says it in the code, but the table has no maximum.
Oh, you know, we may just need to edit that in the narrative 'cause we had maximums in there for a while and then decided to, to take those out. One thing that a lot of form-based codes will include is an emphasis on shared parking and having, uh, having that as an option for a development to say, okay, we're gonna do shared parking so that we can double up. If we've got an office use that needs the parking all day and residential use that needs the parking all night, there's a percentage reduction there. So rather than having a parking structure that's empty for 18 hours a day like an office building would be to give some incentive to say, okay, let's, let's allow that to be counted for two, two separate uses. We can.
It's right before those charts.
Yeah, we can, we can find that pretty easily. So, yeah, but good catch.
Since you just talked about it, the reduction in parking requirement, I understand the, you know, the church isn't gonna have parking at night and all that kind of stuff. One of the questions I had was, they're able to use public parking spaces to reduce the number of parking spaces that they have. And I think it was 600 feet that, that you gave, 600 feet away from their building, which would be from, from each corner of the building, I think, which is a huge distance, 'cause I Google Earth it. And, and so my concern is, if we have 15 developments all using the reduction in parking with the same public parking spaces, are we reducing that too much?
Well, what it does is it gives them a certain percentage that they would be allowed to count those, but it's not gonna say, oh, we're using, you know, all of our parking is, you know, this on-street, on-street parking. So it allows them to account for some percentage of that happening, which, you know, in the real world, that's how it works. The on-street parking is kind of used by a lot of different, different businesses. I think the real value there is. Um, I think the real value there is that if you're building an apartment building, you, you need 300 parking stalls and you've got some commercial space and it needs, you know, 50 parking stalls, the demand on that parking is just offset. And so the cost of, you know, the cost of a parking stall is not insignificant. So any reduction in percentage that you allow is going to have, again, that, that, that development is just gonna be a lot more viable and those costs, you know, will, will show up in other places. So, so yeah, parking is always a huge issue. We have talked about it for several many hours. So, um, but the, as far as the requirements go here, these are wildly different from the current MCCD parking requirements.
Yeah, just to re, just to restate my concern is just, we reduce it too much because we're sharing parking across. I mean, we're all counting the same public parking spaces multiple times for each building. The, if we go to, um, let me find it real quick. There's a page that has the uses. And it's, and I don't know where it's at.
Uh, seventeen.
Seventeen. Let me go to that real quick. Okay, so under uses, it says, so on page 17, it says use table. It says table 3.1 outlines the uses, blah, 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 blah. We go to page 18, which we have the uses. There's the table 3.1. Then the next page is table 3.2. And I'm, I guess I'm confused what 3.2, 3.4, or 3.3 and 3.5 are. Well, no, it's not. Well, I don't, I don't think, well, clarifying what?
Okay.
Yeah, I think I know.
Yeah, I think I know what you're asking.
So in, in basically the master use table is this 3.1 where this is, okay, we've got each column depending on which form district you're in. Here are all of the uses permitted, not permitted, upper floor only. Some of those are pretty broad, neighborhood retail. And so these other, um, tables are really saying, okay, these are all the uses that might fall under neighborhood retail. And again, there, there's a lot, there's a lot of, lot of detail there. It's really just providing a little bit more clarity from this table 3.1 to just say, here's, here's a little bit more information if you're trying to do, you know, a specific, you know, party supply shop. That's gonna fall under that category. So they're really just meant to clarify that, that broader table.
Yeah, what, what, what typically happens, and I can give you an example of it happening today, is, um, you know, this will be very helpful mostly for staff so that when somebody comes to us and says, hey, I wanna open a candy shop or something downtown. Well, we go, okay, you're in this, and, and I, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly what it is right now, but I'll just say general retail. Um, so, you know, that's great. But largely what happens is that we get these one-off questions. So like for my example today is that, you know, we're talking about an accessory dwelling unit and I said, it has to have a shared wall. Okay, well, what's a shared wall? Like how much, how much of the wall has to be shared to be considered a shared wall? So this, this, th- this secondary table allows us to go into a little bit more detail and say, okay, this is where, this is what's gonna be considered neighborhood retail as opposed to general retail.
Sure, let me, let me go first, Jake.
So, so for clarity, what if a number 10 there, uh, 10 neighborhood retail, after that you put, you know, see table 3.2?
Sure, sure.
That's exa- you're exactly right, Dan. That's what we need because if I go to Assembly, well, where's my table for Assembly? There is no table for Assembly and every other table is referenced in this code. These are not. And they're kind of put right in the center. I mean, I, I made some, you know, I've probably figured out what they were for. But yeah, I think, I think Commissioner Hacker is saying this perfectly. Just right after general service, if you said, see table 3.3? Or a link, a hyperlink to it since this is gonna be a, a living document, right? Okay, awesome.
Yeah, well, that's great.
If anybody else has questions, just take, they can take the mic from me, so.
These are great.
Can I maybe just, um, while we're on the topic of use, we've got, um, a question will inevitably come up that it's just where, you know, the barn doors are open, any use is on the table. We still have a list of prohibited uses in the city center area, just so, um, everyone's clear on that. And these really started with those that were already not allowed. In the MCCD zone, we added a few, check caching. Drive-through facilities is one that you'll probably spend some time, uh, on. Um, drive-throughs are inherently cart-oriented. Where we've got a place where we're trying to make it more walkable, we're really saying, you can have a business of just about any kind, but you can't have a drive-through. There are many, many places in your city where you can have drive-throughs. So it's really just saying the focus in this area is more walkability. Um, we have the poster child for allowing drive-throughs in places where they should not. Uh, South Salt Lake City has been trying to develop a downtown for decades now and they've permitted the, the, we'll call it the, the Great Wall of China of drive-throughs. It's, uh, In-N-Out Burger that has a drive-through that can fit like 60 vehicles in it. And it's kind of like, well, you guys say you want a downtown area, but you've just created this thing that is designed around making it less walkable. So those prohibited uses, most of those again are already not permitted in the city center area. That drive-through, um, requirement is one that, just so you understand why that's included in the, you can have a McDonald's of all you want, it just can't have a drive-through, which will probably keep McDonald's out of your city center.
Just for the record, I had on my list that I'm not sure we should completely eliminate drive-throughs in this whole area, but that's okay. I'm not gonna, that's all I'm gonna say about it. Uh, yeah, I, I think there's places within, within this area that could have a Starbucks at the bottom of a building where they could have adequate space for a drive-through, but that's okay. Um, office and professional use is not allowed on the ground floor of BN and TN. Why would we not allow that?
Uh, which, which two? You said TN and?
BN. No, well, I wrote it down. BD.
Oh, D.
BD.
Okay, what did you say, office and?
Office and professional. Am I wrong?
No, you're correct. So, well, they're permitted on the upper.
Those are permitted on upper floors. So what we're trying to do in those particular form districts is to have more active uses on the ground floor. And so, you know, retail, restaurants, cafes, things like that that have, you know, more hours of operation and having office and things up on upper, upper floors.
Yeah, but aren't you limiting, I, I mean, if you go walk downtown Salt Lake, there's a million professional offices on the ground floor. There are restaurants and, you know, heavy trafficked areas, but why limit the entire district to have no professional or office use on the ground floor? I, I think we should not do that.
And that's why we're here tonight is to hear that type of feedback. You say, yeah, let's allow it on the ground floor. That, that's perfectly fine. I think as long as you kind of understand the thinking behind why you may wanna think about that, but it, I'm, I'm totally fine if you wanna adjust that.
A quick question, slightly different topic. Sorry, I'm new here. Uh, does the city own any land in this area? Uh, do you have specific plans for it? Do you plan to lease it out? I'm not sure, I'm just trying to catch up.
To be determined. To be, to come, to co- uh, th- there are, there, um, we own a, a significant amount of land in the downtown area. Um, it is public knowledge that we are in an exclusive negotiation agreement, uh, with Rockworth Companies uh, regarding this block over here, uh, just to the east of us. Um, uh, not the T-Rose, um, but the parking lot next to it and all the, all, pretty much everything over there. Um, but we also do own some additional property throughout the, the downtown area.
Would that be part of this discussion?
Uh, no, what, what happens exactly there, no, it wouldn't be part of this discussion here. This is, this is regulations for the entire district i- is what we're looking at, not, not a specific project.
Gotcha. Does it, I guess I might, I'm just coming to, is would the city property be bound by the same? Okay.
Yeah, we've, we've been working, um, with that exclusive negotiation agreement. Um, we've been playing, you know, weaving a, a nice blanket, I guess you could say, that, um, we've been sharing these drafts with, with Rockworth saying, hey, you will be subject to this code, um, when it comes forward. Yeah.
Under parking requirements, we say EV charging stations. Charging facilities or space to accommodate future charging facilities shall be included in multifamily, commercial and mixed-use developments per city requirements. What is the city requirement? Do you know, Zach, off the top of your head for those? And, sorry, and why, why if it's already a city requirement, are we re-saying it in here?
Um, that might just be a, a, just a term, uh, we'll have to look at it a little bit further. Um, I know that, uh, one of the members on the steering committee is very passionate about, um, EV charging um, and wants, wants that, uh, I, I believe put in, into the code. So, uh, we had put it in there, uh, but the, the specific language we can look at because I don't think there's a requirement right now from the city to, to require EV chargers anywhere. It's really, I think what it probably should say is subject to like location and power, powers restrictions really is what we're probably trying to say there is that, uh, power, the Murray City Power Department will have restrictions on like the size of the meters and stuff on, on, on all that area.
I, I don't like how this is worded and let me tell you why. Um, I understand the, 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 uh, the desire to have EV charging stations. The problem is going to be either you're putting in a few charging stations for the lucky people that happen to get there or you have to mandate that you have charging stations for everyone, which is not feasible at this point. And so I think we just take this EV charging station out completely. It, I, or, or we need to spell out what it, what it is. Cause right now it's, it's very vague. What does that mean? I pick one spot and run a conduit there and say, yeah, I'm ready for the future, but one spot doesn't do us any good. And if, if the public moves towards buying electric vehicles more, then you're gonna have to have the whole parking lot EV charging stations. If it's a business and you want everybody charging the vehicle during the day. And again, is it, is it necessary to require this? So the lucky two that get to the charging stations first get to charge their vehicle? I don't, I don't, I don't like it, that's just me.
Do you like charging stations at all? I guess I'm.
So it says per city requirements, right? But the city didn't have any requirements yet. So that needs, code need to be changed too, right? So, um, I, it's coming, they're coming, they're already here.
So whether they're man-baited or whether?
I, I agree they're coming and, um, you know, when, when we build our building for my business, we put in charging stations. We didn't have to, but we did. But again, if it's coming, it's coming for all the cars. And do we wanna have people charging all their cars all day long in every spot? Or do we just wanna have two to make us feel good as a city? And I think that's what we're doing. Because it's not making a difference for everybody. If, if 50 people show up to charge their car and we have two spots, it didn't make a difference really. Unless we mandate all 50 spots have charging stations. And that's a whole different discussion and a whole different thing that I think we should leave for another day, but. Um, the parking lot landscaping, I think, I'm just gonna state this, you can look at it. I think it's a little over the top. I think we should expand it a little bit. I think it's every 10 cars there has to be landscaping. There's a diagram there. And I went and looked at parking lots. I did, you know, Google Earth to just look at parking lots i- in Murray right here. And they are, that's way more landscaping than, than they have. Um, and so I think we should maybe relax that just a little bit. I like the landscaping, it's awesome, but, um, I just have a note here that the Hawthorne trees have berries on them, so do we want a berry tree in the city? Something to think about. Tell me how the, uh, tell me how, it, it mentions outdoor dining and it says that they can, I can't remember exactly what it says, but it says something about having outdoor dining and if they could lease it from the city? Lease land from the city or something like that. And maybe you know what I'm talking about, but do we have a method to allow a restaurant to put tables all the way out to the curb? Is that something we have in place now?
So it would be something where they lease like part of the right-of-way from the city, I would assume. Um, and I, I don't, currently we do not, uh, as far as I'm aware, unless Mark knows of something that I don't know. Um, yeah.
We talked about this, like maybe on a week that you were not around, but we talked about the city would have to develop, uh, structure to lease that. And it's really, if a private business is using public right-of-way, what does that agreement look like? Just, but it would be something that the city would have to develop.
But that was the intention then, to allow them to like put tables or something, I, I, okay. Um, if we go to page 103, this did not make sense to me. It says exempt activities, the following activities are exempt from the administration requirements. I'm just gonna jump to two. Ordinary repairs for the purpose of regular building signage, lighting and site maintenance. That makes sense to me. Number three, replacement of existing windows. That makes sense to me. Number one, building permits may still be required under building code. Doesn't make sense. I mean, that needs to be reworded or something, I don't know.
So if somebody, i- i- it doesn't matter what type of work you do in a building typically unless, and, and forgive me if I get this wrong a hundred percent, but if you're touching like, um, plumbing or electrical or anything, even if it's in the repair of a building, you still have to get a building permit for those things, um, per, per city code. So that's what that's saying is that yes, you can do ordinary repairs, um, for regular building or, you know, do interior construction, um, that, you know, that's not affecting the exterior of the building. But you're still required to get a building permit for, for that.
Okay, but let me read what it says then. The following activities are exempt from the administrative, administrative requirements, colon. Building permits may still be required under building code. We need to just reword that to say, either in the header maybe? That's not a bullet point underneath the exempt activities, right?
I got you now.
Okay. Um, let's see. I read the food cart section and I'm not sure, I had a whole bunch of things that I didn't like about it. One of my favorite food carts I go to is right in the front of a business. And we're gonna make them be 200 feet away and then the next food cart be 200 feet away from that. You, how are you gonna be two feet, 200 feet away from the entrance to a business? You're not. It eliminates food cart, c- c- carts in the whole area. I think it's almost impossible to put a food cart in, in the city if you have to be 200 feet away from the entrance to a, a, a business.
Um, I think we may need to, um, re- reword some of that a little bit. The intent was that it would be 200 feet from a restaurant. Most restaurant businesses, when a city starts saying food trucks and food carts are allowed, light their hair on fire. So what we're trying to do here is to say, if you have a food cart, we would love for a food cart to be in the city center. You just do not park right in front of another restaurant. Like that's the, that's the intent.
I mean, but does, but doesn't the building owner, or the building owner has to allow them to put their food cart there? Cause it has to be on. Okay, is this in here that I missed this, that they can put it on city land? Because I thought it said they could not.
Uh, no, it, not on city-owned land.
Okay, can it be on a city corner? Cause I believe it says it cannot. So it has to be on public, private property. So it might be licensed through the city, but it still has to be on private property. So shouldn't a private property owner decide if he can have a food cart, cart in front of his business? If it's already licensed through the city and even if it's 20 feet from the restaurant that he's leasing the building to?
So what I think, uh, uh, and there's always gonna be exceptions to these rules, right? Or, um, extreme cases, I'll, I'll say. Uh, but what I could see is that, you know, especially in a downtown area, you're gonna have smaller buildings and stuff where it might not be the property owner that, that is close to that. Um, you know, you could take, for example, You know, you could take, for example, could you go to, like, a Google map and just go to, like, State Street right around here? Sorry, I'm putting you on the, right there on the, keep going just a little bit, right there. Okay, zoom in. So the, the property on the left-hand side, so you can see that parking lot to the north, that is actually owned by someone different than those little buildings right below them.
Which one are you talking about?
Oh, sorry, right where his mouse cursor is, right there. Yeah. So that parking lot is owned by somebody different than the, than the building right south of it. So, you know, this is actually a prime example, they, they wanted to put a food truck there, and they did for a little while, which was great. And, but if we had, you know, a business there currently, then it wouldn't be allowed. And so that's where I think the, so we just have to make sure that it's word-smithed a little, a little more creatively.
But it's only food carts in this, I believe, that are, have that requirement. Food trucks do not have that requirement. So in theory, a food truck could park right on the corner, correct?
Yeah.
So because they're richer and have a food truck, and not a food car, they can park there?
Technically.
Because all your requirements, if you go look at your food cart section, which I understand we have codes for food trucks that are separate from this.
State.
States, okay, state. There's no city? Because I think it says city.
Mostly state.
Okay. Well, I think this document, I believe, I could be wrong, says food trucks are city code. See, and I think it references it even.
So what that would be is our city code pretty much reflects what the state code is. So it would be the same thing, almost word for word. Because the state has come in and disallowed cities from regulating food trucks for a, a number of, of things, which is, you know, I, I, I think it's fine. I love food trucks, I think they're great. So the vending cart is just, is, is just a little different. We just need to wordsmith it, I think, a little bit better.
The other day, we had a planning commission meeting here, and after we went out and there's a, a celebration out here, we had food trucks the city had arranged, I'm assuming, to come in and do it. And if we had food carts instead of food trucks, then we could have had one, because the next one would have had to be 600 feet away or whatever the requirement is for the, or 200 feet away. So we'd have one here and one on the other side of the parking lot, which I don't think it makes sense to me. I think we should look at this section. There was a couple other things, I'm just going to mention them. Chairs, there was a limit of one chair per food cart, which, one of my other favorite food carts to go to has a little seating area, so when I give my taco, I can sit down, which I don't understand why they're letting that to one chair. Okay, I'm going to leave, move off food carts, because I think I spend enough time doing that.
Must be hungry.
I'm, I'm always hungry. Let me just see, I've got a few more. I just want to make sure I hit them all. Marquee signs, why, why, why not allow those? We already have some in downtown Murray, and if we're trying to have this, this historic fill, why wouldn't we allow a dance company to come in and put a building and have a marquee sign out front? So I don't, I don't know why we're limiting that to...
Signage is super complicated in the state. I agree with you, I think marquee signs bring a certain vibe to, you know, a historic city center. We had talked about this in the steering committee of allowing marquee signs, but limiting the definition of what a marquee sign is. So the, what we don't want is to have big video screens everywhere that don't have, you know, it's one thing to have a historic marquee on State Street, it's one thing to say, here's a big video screen that's, you know, playing commercials or whatever. So we had actually talked about this, changing it to allow marquee signs, and then just say, this is subject to staff, you know, staff approval and the context of, in which it's, it's installed.
I believe right now it does say marquee signs that are electronic or have movable letters, manual movable letters are not allowed. Which I understand the electronic one maybe, but the movable letters is exactly what Murray Theater had or will have, I assume, right? The, I'm almost done, I promise. There's a lot of, to be decided by the staff or the city in this, in this thing, a lot of it. Seems like almost every page it was like, you know, this is okay unless decided by the staff because it's, they, they want it, which I think I'm fine with. Signing had a lot of that. Neon signs was one of those, where it specifically said, you can't have a neon sign unless approved by staff. And it does say at the very end of the document, which it was making me frustrated until I got to the end of the document, and I got to a place where it says something like, any decision made by staff or the city can be appealed. So I'm just wondering if you can talk to me about, it doesn't say how that appeal process works, so if I want to get a neon sign, I come and I say, I want to put a neon sign, and I go to staff and staff says, nope, you can't have a neon sign. How does that appeal process work?
So that's a good example of the, let's go back to the, this approval process. So that's a good example of, okay, you've gone through this process, there's something like a neon sign that you want in there, that would go to that architectural review committee. So there would be a committee of designers or your, you know, your previous architectural review that would say, oh yes, this, this is totally appropriate for our downtown city center area, that, that could be approved. If that group says, no, this particular neon sign is not what we want, you can come to this group, planning commission, and make the same, make the same case.
So shouldn't we spell out how that works? Because it's not spelled out, as far as I could tell, in here at all.
Well, we have a whole chapter here that says, here's how that, how that appeal happens. This, this administration chapter, it's basically saying, if you have an appeal, this is, this is where that happens, that, that part of that process.
Is that in this document?
This administration chapter, this chapter 10, where it goes through the, that review So we're at 100, 101, that's really the last chapter to the, to the document.
Oh, if you, unless, if it's...
Go ahead. Sorry. Forgive the newbie question here, it's more a question about process. I can tell Jake you really did your homework, and I feel bad. I, I read through it once, I feel like I understand what this is, the vision and all that. I don't feel like I'm prepared for this. And so it's more of a process question, like, is this, is this something we've been doing over several meetings, kind of back and forth, I don't like this part, we don't like this part? Just trying to kind of understand what the process for this thing going through, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so what, what we anticipate happening is that we'll, we're doing this, this discussion this evening. If you feel like you need another, go, go at it, we can definitely do that. So far, I hadn't planned on having a February 6th planning commission meeting, but if it's something that you feel like you want to kind of review again and have some more detail in, we might be able to have a draft done. Oh, hold on one second.
Just really quick, you're not limited to giving us comments in this meeting either. You, we, you're welcome to email us and say, I have some questions about this, I, you know, this is just a, a time for us to give an update on the form-based code efforts. You can, you know, if you want to even put your comments in an email. Ultimately, you know, we're going to come to you with a recommendation of what we think it ought to be, we want to have your, your input on that. I think some of these things we've heard tonight, we're going to make some changes, other things we'll come back to and say, you know, we've thought through this, here's something else to think about. But, yeah, we, we don't have to have every comment in this forum, you can email them to us.
Yeah, definitely. So, yeah, I think Chad addressed it perfectly.
I'm catching that.
Yeah, no, 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 we don't expect you to have this memorized.
Okay, just, sorry, I'm going back to my sign. So this administration section in number 10, I have a business, and it's a, whatever it's going to be, and I want a neon sign for it. This section here is for a building permit development. There's a building permit that's along with this. Is there a building permit for my sign? And is it called a building permit? It is called a building permit? Okay. So it would go through this exact same process. If I have a neon sign, I would apply for the neon sign, or I would just ask the city staff, and they might be, say yes, because that's what it says. And if they say no, then I do a building, well, I do a building permit either way. For my sign, staff says, yep, you're good. Or they say, nope, you can't do that. My, my project is denied, I guess, then it comes to the planning staff. If, if I want, if I don't agree with your decision.
Yeah, either the architectural review committee or the planning commission, yes.
Okay. Yeah.
So I think we, we, I had sent a comment in, on this, and, and we'll talk about it a, a little bit more, but I, I want specific thresholds for what level of deviation, right? I think there needs to be some, some fine tuning there on, like, if we're moving, you know, 10 to 20%, it goes to the architectural review committee. If it moves, you know, more than 20%, it goes to planning commission. And, and we'll, we'll flush that out as we keep going forward as well and keep drafting. And specifically for, for signage, yeah, we'll, we'll look at that too. I'll, I'll look at it in more, more detail as well to figure out kind of where, where you were showing that. And if you could, I, I would love to have your comments emailed too, so I can read through them.
Cross them over.
That's okay, that's fine. Don't worry about it. No, I, I've written most of them down, so I can go through a lot of them.
One thing that I'll mention, in this state, signage has to be regulated very, very, very strictly for reasons I won't get into tonight. That's one reason why the signage section here has a lot of detail. I am super pro-neon signs, I love marquee signs, I think they give a lot of character to a place. And so I think if this group thinks, hey, we really think these types of signs should be allowed, here is a ceiling that we need to put on it, because every signage option in here, we just, we have to have a ceiling on it, or Reagan will drive through that with a Mack truck. And so we just need to make sure that we're really specific to say, neon signs are permitted in this circumstance, here is a ceiling for that, that permission. So that's just, I guess, a response to that, that we've gotten, all of these we have talked about and gone back and forth, and everyone's made a case for one or the other. I think if you have a good case for something to say, we should allow neon signs, also propose some type of, you know, here's a, here's a size limitation, or here's some type of ceiling that we can include in there.
Actually, do you have a question? When I was reading through the neighborhood corridor and then the residential, I can't remember, transition, what is the big difference there? Because there's a lot of things that were allowed within the neighborhood corridor that weren't allowed within the residential transition, and they kind of drove the areas, and I was like, they're both very close to single-family homes. What's kind of the thought process behind those decisions?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. The neighborhood corridor, because 4800 is such an important east-west corridor, we wanted to have that looked at differently than this east-side residential transition where you really are right next to, you're in a single-family neighborhood. And so we wanted the height allowed to be a little bit different. It's not wildly different in height from the residential transition, but just the nature of that corridor was different from this little piece on the east side of, the east side of the, the city center. So that was the, kind of the thinking behind that. Okay. Great. I'll, I'll send the, the presentation to Zach, and he can distribute that as well. Like you mentioned, we're at the point where we're really taking specific items of feedback. So if it's, you know, we need to rethink the vending cart regulation and how that's described, like, that's where, that's where we're at, we're into the weeds now.
If that's going to affect Jake's eating habits, that's got to be changed.
Well, and that's also, you know, those are really a hot-button issue for some types of businesses. Some businesses are like, I want a taco truck right in front of my business. If you're a guy who's been paying rent on a building, making tacos for 20 years, and a taco truck comes and parks in front, you're going to have some emotions there. And so there's, there's pros and cons to all of these, but I think what, where we're at is trying to figure out, okay, what's the balance to, to get there.
Can I just one more comment? I, I had one more comment I forgot to say, and it is about the food trucks and, or the food, the food carts. One of the requirements was that it was, be removed off the premises every night, which I know a lot of those food trucks are moved inside the building at night, which that would not be off-premises, so I think we maybe should rethink the wording there, where maybe they're removed from outside or something like that. Because I know, like, a Lowe's or whatever, they have, like, a hot dog vendor that's outside every day, and they just pull it inside every night, and it would be, it would be very burdensome to take that, wheel their cart without a, without a vehicle, far, far away off-site. Now I really am done.
Yeah, no, no, this is great. So, yeah, we've got here, all aspects of the business shall be moved on and off the premises each day. So we can reword that and say either, you know, into a structure or off, off premises. Great. Well, no, this has been great. We will keep revising, like Zach mentioned, we've got a steering committee meeting next week, we've got a meeting with city council as well next week. And then, again, we're working towards an adoption process to, to have the code adopted and ready for, ready for use for your other, you know, things that are happening in the city currently.
Perfect, I'll turn it over to Chair.
Appreciate it. And thanks for all the comments from the planning commission. No, I, 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 it's perfect, perfect. Don't be packing up your stuff, Pete, we're still in business here. Zach, do you have any other, any other business? Here, I have one other, I have one other thing. New commissioners, are you going to make a new list of commissioners and I think it was staff and contact information? Okay. And I don't know if you get, have you gotten the meeting schedule for the rest of the year? Okay, so that was the other thing.
I will, I will circulate that.
Okay. Any other business by the commissioners' staff? Chad? Come on? All right.
Go get some tacos.
Yes. Is it still open?
Probably.
I know one that's open, on my way home. All right. No other business? I look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn at 8:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right.